Hello everyone, welcome to the February seventeenth edition of the Decaturish.com Twitch Show. I am your host, editor and publisher Dan Wizenhaut. Clarkston is going to be having an election for city council. It's a special election. Election day is March sixteenth. Early voting is going to start on February twenty-second. And today we're going to chat with the three candidates that are running for that seat. Our guests today are Mark Perkins. Mark, how are you?
I'm doing okay.
And Dean Moore. Dean, how are you, sir?
I'm fine.
And Shayna Tiny McAllister. Shayna, how are you?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Good. Do you prefer Shayna or do you prefer Tiny? I don't want to...
Um, let's go with Tiny.
All right. Sounds good to me. So, uh, the candidates have not been given any questions in advance. Um, we are going to give candidates two minutes to respond to each question. I will be keeping time. And we're going to have questions, uh, we're going to have closing statements as well. If you have a question, go ahead and create yourself a Twitch account. Uh, give us a follow and you can get in our chat stream and, uh, and ask some questions. Zoe Seiler is watching. Zoe is going to be covering this for us and it's going to go, uh, on TuckerObserver.com. So that's, that's pretty cool. So, uh, first question, I'll, I'll start with Tiny. Um, can you give us an opening statement about yourself and why you're running for this seat?
Oh man, this is exciting. Okay, so, um, man, um, I am running for this seat, uh, for a number of reasons. Largely because I am in love with this city. Um, I moved here almost two years ago and since then I've met so many amazing people that live in this city. And, and because of that, I want to make it my home and I plan to stay here. I plan to make a change and I plan to be a part of the growth of Clarkston. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dean, how about you?
I, I've been here twenty-four years and I've been working with the city for thirteen years. And the, uh, in a government capacity, uh, as well as with the, uh, the people and the different, uh, programs and organizations to, uh, bring about the future, all this, uh, new construction we've had. Um, it has been a tremendous, uh, experience for me and I want to continue that experience. This year we've got some, uh, important, uh, milestones. We're going to be doing some, uh, zoning ordinance review and the, um, uh, comprehensive plan, which is, these are our future planning documents. And I really want to get back in and be a part of that as, uh, as somebody who is going to be analyzing it. I've got extensive, uh, construction background. I've got government, uh, experience with, uh, policy and administration and, um, it's, um, it's a great community. And, uh, I like connecting people here. So I'm, I'm excited about this. I want to keep on working with Clarkston. Oh, and I want to mention, we've got a really good mayor right now too. And the, and the council's been doing some great things in this dangerous time with the COVID. Uh, I support everything they've been doing and they've been doing a tremendous job. So, thank you.
Mayor Burks is actually, uh, watching right now. So hello, Mayor Burks. She joined our show, uh, a few weeks ago. We are glad to have her on. Hope she'll join us again. Uh, Mark, how about you, sir?
Hey, so I, um, have been in Clarkston or in the Clarkston area about seven years. Um, we were about four hundred meters or yards, depending on your, your system of measurement of choice, uh, outside of Clarkston for about four years in Christopher Wood and, uh, most recently bought a home about two years ago. Um, and I'm, I'm running for city council and this is, the pandemic has illustrated, um, there are a lot of challenges that, uh, we face as communities, um, that aren't foreseen. You know, that, uh, you know, we can't necessarily plan for, we can't figure out all the details for. And, uh, the thing that allows us to engage those challenges is by having a culture of collaboration and a culture of collaborative problem solving where we can, um, kind of work through the differences that we have. Um, and, uh, and find common ground to, to be able to work together. And so the things that we've been able to accomplish is I've watched a nonprofit, um, partners, um, and, uh, you know, working with both sides of the city council right now with, uh, you know, also with Mayor Burks, uh, in response to COVID. Um, uh, whether it's rent assistance or some of the mass distributions, you know, we've done. The thing that all of the successful endeavors have in common, it's, it's a culture of collaborative problem solving and, and of conversation. And so that's why I'm running, is I'd like to see a little bit more of that happen on city council because when that isn't happening, uh, the community suffers for it. So.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, so we'll start with our, uh, first question and we'll start with, uh, Dean Moore on this one. Dean, what do you think makes you a better candidate than your opponents in this race?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, my, uh, extensive construction background and my government service and in the administration and setting progressive policy. And I've been a connector. Uh, I've, uh, helped with Ready School, uh, organize, uh, the Ready School, getting kids ready for kindergarten that have, uh, uh, Arabic or, or other languages, I should say, to help teach them English, uh, to get them into the, uh, the Scottsdale, uh, Child Development Center. Uh, worked with United Way on, uh, the Opportunity Zone, getting mini grants, uh, that have developed programs. There was one program with, uh, some kids learning karate, uh, that got up and running. There's many other that, that I don't want to go into all of them at this time. But we, we've really got to build the future for the children to be able to make them, uh, you know, good, good caretakers for the, for their future as well. And so, you know, working with the, uh, the different people in, in, and the organizations, I've worked with Global Growers and and some of the other volunteer groups. Uh, we pulled together the, uh, Coalition of Refugee, uh, Service, uh, Agencies to bond, to present a, a, uh, a full, a better picture of what we have here. There's been a lot of negative things with the, uh, uh, in the past that now we're going forward and they've, uh, they've done some great things. Like, like Mark says with the COVID, there's things that pop up you don't know about and we've, we've done that. Uh, we changed the former government back in, uh, two thousand and ten and, uh, got a city manager. So we've professionalized the city and I was a part of that. So I want to continue with the growth. And, um, I think I'm, I'm well suited for that with my experience.
Thank you. Uh, Mark, question to you. Uh, what do you think makes you a better candidate than your opponents?
Um, and, uh, I appreciate your reaction Shayna. It's a, it's a very pointed question. Um, you know, I think, I think, um, there's a lot of good that's been done, you know, I would say, um, by, by everyone on this call, um, in different areas. I think, uh, what does set me apart, um, is, uh, you know, I, my life experience, um, I actually grew up in, in countries that represent a number of, uh, the, uh, members of our community. Um, I spent a significant amount of my childhood in South America. Um, I spent a significant amount of my, you know, teens in India and in, uh, Thailand and, and, um, uh, Bangladesh as well. Um, as we know, I mean, we have, I mean, close to a hundred different distinct ethnic groups, you know, in the square mile that we call home. And I think the thing that sets, uh, me apart is what, what I've learned in that is I've appreciated the value of welcome. You know, the, the, the challenge of learning to, uh, make life work in a culture that's not your own. Um, and I also appreciate the importance of, uh, of kind of knowing when you know things and knowing when you don't, you know, and the importance of bringing in a diverse group of voices to influence decision-making in the city. Um, and, uh, you know, so I would say, you know, if, if there's any criticism, you know, me, it's, I don't consider myself an expert, you know, on everything. I don't think that someone in a community as diverse as ours could, you, you know, should posture themselves as that because there are too many perspectives. Um, you know, to be able to lump them in one bucket and say, well, I kind of see above all of that. Um, so I think my, you know, where, uh, you know, I would, I would put myself forward, you know, it's just, you know, recently with, with COVID is, is relying and leaning on, on different groups and pushing them into the spotlight and saying, all right, hey, let's rely on, you know, Refugee Women's Network and their network of women to, uh, help with translation, to help, uh, you know, to help access, you know, people in the apartments who aren't able to make rent relief. You know, let's rely on, you know, Atlanta Legal Aid for their legal services and legal advice and, and piecing together experts in different fields to come up with solutions to help the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Um, Shayna, Tiny, how about you? What makes you a better candidate than your opponents?
Oh man, I'm ready for this question. Okay, um, okay, let's go off with it. Uh, first of all, um, I'm a single mom. I am pretty poor. Um, and I live, like, my neighbors are like from all over the globe, right? They're from Nepal. They're from like West and East Africa. And not a lot of us speak the same language. But regardless of that, we're still able to communicate. We're still able to, you know, bond and see each other and feel that, you know, closeness. And, and these are people, mind you, with all different cultures, um, totally different, you know, um, like upbringing, they're, they're totally different people and yet we can all get along. And I think that, that is why I love Clarkston and, uh, and that's why I want to, you know, run. And I feel like because I feel that connection with the entire community, white, brown, whatever color you are. You know, I feel like I can represent these people, you know. Uh, I, I thought I can represent the people that I relate to most. And because we are all on the same level, you know, you know, social, society-wise, like income-wise, like we, I, I am running to represent people like me. And I feel like out of the three of us, I represent the people. So, that's it.
Thank you, Tiny. I appreciate that. Uh, so next question, first person to answer it will be Mark. Mark, if you were elected, what are the top two or three things you would plan to focus on as a council member?
Yeah, so I think, um, you know, the first thing I'd frame is the timeframe we're working with, which is whoever ends up being elected is, is going to serve in this position for, you know, eight, eight or nine months. Um, and, uh, so I think what's, you know, realistic to be accomplished, you know, within that time span, you know, is, um, you know, it does put some, you know, put some limitations on it. Um, I think our biggest priority right now is, is, um, is leveraging every resource we have in the city to continue, uh, helping people survive, uh, this pandemic. Um, honestly, I think the next nine months, right now there isn't a clear end in sight. We have hope of the vaccine. But, um, you know, as, as a number of, you know, folks have mentioned, we're still dealing with education issues, you know, that this has created. Um, there's a number of our community, I think eighty-five to eighty-seven percent of the community lives in apartments. And, uh, and folks are still having trouble, you know, yes, you know, uh, no, you're, you're living apartments. Yeah, people are having trouble making, you know, rent. Uh, they're having trouble, uh, finding jobs. And so I think those are, uh, really big issues. Again, it comes back to that collaborative problem solving. And so the thing I would focus on right now is, is helping us make sure that we survive this, you know? And then if we, if we do get to the point where we can begin rebuilding, um, you know, make sure that we're rebuilding in a way that we don't lose the, you know, the businesses, um, and, uh, the people that make up the community that, that we've all come to love and know.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Tiny, uh, if you were elected, what are the top two or three things that you would like to focus on as a council member?
Okay, so, um, I might, I know this is going to sound silly, but my biggest issue is our, um, our, our ability to deal with, um, our waste management, like recycling and, and the trash and littering and, and, and I feel like that's a major problem here in Clarkston. Um, and, and first, first and foremost, I want to address, um, reeducating the public about reduce, reuse, recycle. Um, I know, I know it seems like a small target, but eventually, you know, with the right effort behind it, um, it could, you know, really have a ripple effect on our city and, you know, neighboring cities and, you know, maybe even nationwide. Like, I, I would really like to see more people focus on reuse, reuse, recycle. Um, second, um, I would really like to, you know, address COVID-related concerns. Uh, more food drives, more assistance for, you know, low-income people. Um, I know we've been, the budget-wise, we've been going back and forth on like, you know, are, are we going to provide rent assistance or utility assistance and, um, and, and I would really like to see more of our, you know, budget and efforts going towards the people that really need our help. Number three, um, oh man, it's exciting. Um, I, uh, I don't know if we can touch the NAMM issue. Ooh, um, but you know, of course I want to address, you know, planning and development and, um, having a seat on the board or on the council, um, would, would give me the opportunity to oversee things like planning and development. And I would like to have a hand in that, so.
Thank you. Thank you for your answer. Uh, Dean Moore, if you were elected, what are the top two or three things you would plan to focus on as a council member?
Well, considering the, um, the, uh, COVID experience has been going on for over a year, barely a year. And, uh, you know, I don't know that I can really offer anything new because the, the council's been doing a great job with this. Um, if I get in and, and see something that I might be able to help, then I would, but I would like to continue the work that they're doing. Um, but this year we've got, like I mentioned earlier, two important milestones. We're going to, uh, review our zoning ordinances and we're going to do the comprehensive plan. And you can go to my website, MoreForClarkston, M W O R E for Clarkson.org, and you can see some of my background. Um, we've, during my past tenure with, with the city, uh, we expanded the city and we have reviewed documents every five years as required by the Atlanta Regional Commission. And so this is a year that we're doing that. So I, I want to be involved in the future as well as, you know, continuing to work with the COVID and the, um, the, uh, smart development, uh, making, making sure that, that development is done in a smart way. It's for the benefit of the people in Clarkston. And so, you know, I, I hope to continue that, that aspect of it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, I've been informed that my microphone might be a little quiet for people, so I'm going to talk even louder than I usually do. Uh, and if, and if anybody has a problem hearing me, let me know and I'll repeat the question or throw something in the comments and I'll, uh, I'll address it there. Tiny, question is to you first. Um, what is your opinion of the current city manager of Clarkston?
Oh, I love Robin. He's awesome. He's a really sweet guy. Really nice.
What's your opinion of his performance as city manager though? Do you have any thoughts about how he's doing his job?
Yeah, no, I think he's relatively new. He's hired in like the last couple of years. Um, you know, I don't, I can't really say I have any complaints with him. I think he's been very effective, uh, you know, handling his duties and, um, you know, he seems to carry himself well at the meetings. So, you know, yeah, uh, Robin Gomez is great, you know? That's a, uh, yeah, he's a, he's a good guy.
All right. Thank you. What is your opinion of Clarkston's current city manager? Dean?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were talking to me.
No, no, I'm sorry. If, if you can't hear me, Dean, what is your opinion of Clarkston's current city manager?
Uh, I, I enjoy, uh, I've had a few meetings with, uh, with Mr. Gomez and, uh, I think he's doing a good job. Um, I, I don't know that there's anything I would change. Um, so yeah, he, I think he's, uh, he's integrated well with the council and, uh, meets their needs and answers their questions, uh, puts their programs forward. And, uh, he's been doing a tremendous job with the, uh, with the rent relief and the mortgage relief and the, uh, you know, dealing with COVID. And, and, and he, he took over in the middle of our major construction, uh, uh, streets games projects and whatnot. So he's, he's getting everything wrapped up. At the same time, he's dealing with the COVID and the budget and I think he's doing a fine job.
Mark, what is your opinion of Clarkston's current city manager?
Yeah, so as, you know, as Dean said, he, he's had a lot on his plate, you know, kind of jumping in. And I, I think he's done a really impressive job, uh, coming in, in the middle of a pandemic. Um, I've actually worked with Robin, um, on some of the COVID response, uh, you know, as a part of a task force. And so, um, you know, we've done, uh, some things around mass distribution. He's just been really on top of things, uh, just with the logistics and, um, uh, I mean, I feel like every time I talk to him, he's doing something, you know, he's out either distributing masks or distributing literature, you know, to business owners. Um, and so I think it is very commendable, um, the amount of work he's put in, uh, with all the additional challenges of having to switch to remote meetings and limit occupancy in, uh, the city annex building and everything else. So.
Okay, well, it sounds like, uh, approval all around. Uh, good news for him. If, uh, if one of you is elected, he knows that he'll have, uh, people ready to, people ready to re-improve his contract. Um, anywho, I, uh, next question is going to be, we're going to start with Dean. Um, Dean, what services, uh, do you think are operating well within the city of Clarkston? And which ones do you think can be improved?
Well, I mean, a lot of people complain about the trash service and we lost our recycling and, uh, the city has rebounded and gotten recycling back this past month or so. Um, I guess beginning of the year, uh, so that's, that's been going pretty smoothly now. Um, the, uh, distribution of masks, uh, the, uh, distribution of, of money for rent, uh, relief. I'm hoping that the, uh, the county and state will continue, uh, recognizing our efforts and reimbursing us. We had set up, uh, a, uh, a Affordable Housing Trust Fund a few years ago when I was still on council. And, uh, I, I didn't realize at the time, but I was forward-thinking that that cash was good for, uh, for this COVID. And, uh, we can continue to, to do those efforts until we get through this thing. Um, I, I, I look forward to, um, to being successful and getting beyond this and continue with the types of programs that we have in place already.
Mark Perkins, questions to you. What services do you think are working well within the city of Clarkston? And what services do you think can be improved?
Yeah, um, I, I think the, uh, the services that are working well, a lot of them have already been mentioned. Um, uh, some, some things that weren't, I think have been fixed. So, you know, the, the resuming of, uh, recycling pickup has been great. Um, my wife is a big recycler, um, and, uh, I am also by, by virtue of being her husband. Um, so we're really excited to see that and, uh, and I have to make an extra trip somewhere to drop things off. So, um, I think that's good. Um, I think, uh, you know, number, number of other things have already been mentioned, uh, you know, again, in terms of response to COVID. Um, you know, I worked with a couple of the city council members to, you know, to kind of get that, uh, you know, rent relief. Uh, you know, many passengers been encouraging, talking with different members of the council, um, you know, to, to get that allocated towards our, our rental community. Um, and, uh, I think in terms of improvement, um, you know, a couple of areas, and I think this is going to be true of any organization, it's just communication. It's just something that you always have to be working on. Um, so I've heard from some business owners, uh, know that they wish that the, you know, some of the permitting, you know, process was a little smoother. Um, you know, obviously I haven't said, you know, gotten into the details in terms of how that process works and, and where some of the areas that that could be tightened up are, but I think that'd be something I'd be interested in exploring. Um, and then just, uh, making the city website, you know, continuing to make that more navig, you know, navigable for, you know, for the general community. I think that that's another area that we could, uh, uh, you know, continue to improve, you know, build off a good foundation and, and, you know, al- always look for ways to, to grow.
Thank you, Mark. Tiny McAllister, question to you. What are some of the services do you think are, that you think are operating well in the city of Clarkston? And what services do you think can be improved?
Awesome question. Thank you. Um, so I, you know, I would agree with the other guys. Um, I think our response to COVID has been excellent, honestly. Um, when COVID first hit, I was right there along with everybody else, you know? Pretty much lost my employment, didn't know how I was going to pay the bills. And I, you know, ended up going to a couple of the food drives solely because I needed the food. So I would go and volunteer at these food drives because I would go home with a big box of produce and we would eat good for two weeks. And that was awesome. So, you know, I, I would definitely love to see more food drives. That's, you know, number one. Two, um, distribution of masks, but not only, what I've seen, um, is a drop-off like masks and hand sanitizer, but the masks are really big. And we have a lot of children here and the children aren't wearing masks. You know, they're just running around, playing with each other and parents aren't worried about them wearing masks. And even the ones that are distributed, they wouldn't even fit them anyway. So, um, I'm not saying, you know, we're not already doing a good job with that, but I think we could tweak that maybe so that we could help out the children as well. Um, what else? Uh, um, I would love to see, uh, more, more assistance towards like rent and utility, um, assistance, um, you know, uh, I, I don't want to say the budget has been low, but it has run out. And, and, you know, for those people who really need that help and then to hear that, oh, they ran out, they can't help you. And then you're like, oh, well, what do I do now? So, um, I, I know it seems like a stretch, but maybe we can look at that, see, you know, is, is there any more that we could give to the people that need it? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next question. I believe, uh, Mark, we're going to start with you this time because I believe Dean started last time. Uh, Mark, question to you. As a, as a city council member, you, how will you work and sir, work with and serve the city's refugee community?
Um, honestly, the same way I've been. So my, uh, nonprofit job is, is doing exactly that. Um, and so, um, I think, uh, you know, a lot of times we engage with our, uh, refugee neighbors and, and, and leaders in the community in sort of a teaching mode, uh, versus a listening mode. And, and, you know, we kind of go in with our assumptions of how we can help or how we can fix things without recognizing that we have, uh, you know, a lot of times folks who, who have their PhDs and who have their, um, uh, you know, a ton of experience. And so, uh, the, the way that, uh, you know, that I've, you know, worked, you know, with, with leaders in the refugee community, um, in the past, it's, it's been through collaboration. It's, it's grabbing a mill. It's, um, with, with leaders in the refugee community, um, i- in the past is, is been through collaboration. It's, it's grabbing a mill. It's, um, uh, listening, it's understanding. It's, it's not just saying, hey, let me listen to you and then I'm gonna build the solution and come back and fix it. But it's like, alright, well, let's kind of learn each other's strengths and each other's gaps and, and let's figure out how we can work together on problems. So that by the time something's created, you know, we built it together. Um, you know, we use that approach to the resource website we built. We've used that approach. Uh, you know, working, you know, across organizations, uh, you know, with the RIT assistance I mentioned, uh, you know, with food drives. Um, you know, we, we have to understand and value different worldviews and different ways of solving problems. And, and a lot of times the solutions, um, and I'm not speaking hypothetically, the solutions that we're able to, to come up with when we do that, um, are, uh, are better and they last longer. They're, they're more sustainable. So.
Awesome. Uh, Dean Moore, question to you, sir. If you're elected as a council member, how will you work with and serve the city's refugee community?
Well, it's an interesting question because we've got a lot of, uh, service agencies that are helping the, the refugees in the community. The city really doesn't have a resettlement department. We don't have a, a health department. We don't have an education department. We basically provide the infrastructure across the city in place for, um, this collaboration to take place. And, and like Mark says, listening to them, we've, we've brought them into the police station to meet with the police officers to build their trust. So there's, there's that kind of, um, uh, thing, but we need that with the entire community. We, we want to have everybody come to the police station, have meetings with the police. Um, I think on the 27th of February, there's a coffee with the police at the refugee, uh, refuge, uh, coffee shop. Uh, I think it's from 10 to 12. And it's an opportunity for the community to come out and meet with them. And those are the kind of things is outreach to the entire community. We are not just a community of refugees. And they do have special needs and that's where the service agencies come in that can provide those special needs. And, and Mark's been, been involved in that, has been tremendous with that. And we've got a lot of people in the city that, that are tremendous, um, uh, collaborators with, uh, with the city and with the different agencies. Like I mentioned, the, um, the CRESA Coalition Refugee Service Agencies, um, they've pulled together and, and they're doing tremendous work. And we wanna make sure that they have every opportunity to help the people that they do help. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Tiny McAllister, question to you. If you are elected as a council member, how will you work with and serve the city's refugee community?
Yeah, awesome question. Um, so I already live among the refugee community, you know, like I said, um, so serving them is like probably the closest thing to my heart. I mean, that's one of the reasons why I'm running. Um, so I, you know, I, I wanna address a lot of issues. I think Dean, that was excellent idea to establish something, you know, so that when they get here, they're not just thrown into, you know, all the crazies, uh, and, and I, oh man, I wanna do so much. Oh my goodness, I'm freaking out. Uh,
It's okay. Take your time. You're doing fine.
So I, I, uh, what do I, like, I, I'm, I'm thinking like all my neighbors, like what I wanna do for like the children, it's mostly the children. And, and, and translation services and, you know, making sure that you, you know, we can all live together, uh, live together peacefully. I feel like I'm totally botched in this question. You know, my heart is in the right place. I live amongst refugees. Um, and, and I feel like we could do a lot to, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Integrate, integrate, um, and, and acclimate them to live in, you know, this close to a international city. So, uh, yeah, great question. Thank you.
No problem. Uh, and actually you get the next question first since, uh, we've, we've already been around. Um, so Tiny McAllister, do you think that the city should, uh, expand by adding more, uh, unincorporated areas into it by annexation? Do you think the city should grow? And if so, what areas should the city annex into its borders?
Yeah, um, so this is, I, I, I feel like it might be a controversial issue, but if you live in Clarkston, you know, this is a very small city and we are running out of places to let people live, like have people move in, places to develop. Um, I mean, we're, we're loaded with apartments here already, you know, and I, yeah, I would love to annex. I know sounds kind of crazy. Um, in which direction? Um, anywhere in unincorporated to have. I mean, as far as we could go, I, I, I know that sounds like controversial, but yeah, I would love for Clarkston to grow. More, the more the merrier, right?
Thank you. Uh, Dean Moore, question to you. Do you think Clarkston should grow the city by extend, expanding its city limits and annexing more places? And if so, what places should the city annex?
Well, that's, annexation is the only way for the city to grow. Um, we have, uh, uh, annexed two areas already in the past that have really allowed the city to sustain itself. We, uh, added the Brockett Road area. And, uh, the, the whole question of annexation is really up to the people of Clarkston, whether they wanna bring uh, uh, other people into the city. And the people outside the city, whether they wanna come in. We've had discussions over the years. There's a lot of people that do wanna come to the city. But we also have a lot of people that are afraid to come into the city. They don't wanna be a part of the city. They think it's an extra layer of government. And so you've gotta, you gotta balance that out and find out what, uh, what the people want from Clarkson in the first place and then the people outside the city. And we've got two areas that are, um, already on the, on the table that we're looking at. Um, and see if it's cost-effective because we have to provide more services to those people. And, uh, if we can get commercial properties to help build our tax base in that annexation, then that helps out. You know, one of the, um, proposals is to, uh, go down to where the two colleges are, the, uh, Georgia State now, Georgia was Georgia Premier College and the, uh, Georgia, uh, Piedmont Technical College. And those are both, uh, those are not a tax base. Uh, they're, they're not paying taxes into the city, even if we annex them. And so it's, it's a complicated question. And, and the strategy has to be correct to make sure that we don't get stuck holding the bag of providing services at, at our own expense and not have any, any way to, to make up that, that shortfall.
Mark Perkins, question to you, sir. Should the city grow and expand via annexation? And if so, what areas should the city annex?
Yeah, and honestly, I think, uh, my perspective on it has, has been covered. I mean, I, I agree with, with, uh, um, I would say both the other candidates on a number of issues here. I mean, I think it's not a, a clear-cut answer. It's something that needs to be, you know, financially responsible. You know, is, is, if we're taking on, as Dean said, um, you know, more, uh, responsibilities, then there needs to be a way to actually cover those. You know, regardless of the direction of the city. And so, um, you know, I think, you know, it, the, the direction in, in one sense is arbitrary. You know, but the principles are consistent, which is, um, you know, it needs to make sense for the community that's being annexed, for the community that's gonna be, and, you know, uh, adjacent to the community being annexed. Uh, it needs to make sense from a financial standpoint. Um, and, you know, I think, but, but not just the negatives of annexation, also the potential benefits. You know, we don't have any say in the governance of, you know, certain areas of the city that are, you know, right across the street from, you know, Clarkston, you know, police station or other areas that do impact, you know, our neighborhoods. Um, you know, the school systems or everything else. And so again, uh, I think I, I would make, you know, want to make sure that the conversation, um, you know, isn't just on the, you know, the burden that we could be accruing, but also it's like, alright, what are, what are, if we, if we have a strategic approach to this, if we get the right voices in the room. Um, and, and it's, you know, fiscally responsible. Um, what are some opportunities that could open up as well by, by having a say in what is done with properties that might not be within city limits at this time?
Thank you. Alright, we'll start, uh, this next question with Dean Moore. Uh, Dean, the question for you is, do you think Clarkston's Main Street and downtown is healthy and successful? And if not, what would you do to change that?
Well, that's, that's an interesting question because, uh, years ago we did the analysis and, uh, we had uh, projected that through our streetscapes improvements that we could also help the businesses. And so there's, we, we wanna build a, a thriving business, uh, district for our downtown. Uh, Refuge Coffee has come and is doing great. Uh, there's other businesses that are, that are thriving. Um, so we, we continue to, to help them along, understand what, uh, you know, we, we've held some, uh, meetings with them to see what they could do to, uh, improve their businesses and attract more people. And I think we continue that relationship. And like I say, we've, we've improved the landscape. And, uh, that's, that's gonna help tremendously. We're just finishing up those projects. Um, they've been basically 15 years in the process. And so, uh, you know, these things take time. And, uh, we're, we're coming up on a, on an era, I think of, of real business development.
Mark, thank you. Mark Perkins, uh, question to you. Uh, do you think the city's Main Street and downtown is healthy and successful? And if not, what do you think can be done to improve it?
Yeah, I, I think, um, you know, again, given the circumstances with, with COVID and everything else, it's sort of like that should be a caveat at, at the beginning of any answer, uh, in particular with the economic health of the city. Um, I, I think things are doing as well as they could be. Um, you know, I would say overall, um, I, I think it is healthy. Um, you know, we have Refuge Coffee, we have, um, you know, Lamborghini Cafe, we have, um, uh, Bediani Point. I'm, I'm forgetting. I think that, that business has changed a couple of times, um, since I've been here. Uh, you know, we have some just incredible restaurants and, uh, and even stores that make up that front. Um, you, you know, I would, uh, this is a little bit of a, a twist on your question. What I'm concerned about is making sure that those businesses survive. Um, you know, that the, uh, owners that have, have really invested and made our community what it is, are still able to make a living, you know, down there. Um, you know, is, is, you know, home prices continue to rise, is, um, you know, as you see sort of, you know, the, the city, you know, that Decatur and how, you know, thing, things start moving eastward. Um, that, uh, we, we continue the relationships, you know, as Dean said, with those business owners, um, and, uh, and then come up with ways to help them stay profitable, um, you know, within the resources of the city. And again, building partnerships, it's gonna, it's gonna take more than the city's resources. We have to rely on nonprofit partners, um, and, uh, you know, other, you know, organizations and, and businesses that, um, you, you know, share the same goals. So.
Thank you. Tiny McAllister, question to you. Do you think the city's downtown and Main Street is healthy and successful? And if not, what would you do to change that?
Yeah, um, so I love Main Street. I think Refuge is a really, um, you know, not only an amazing place to go and, you know, chat with people and, uh, you know, relax, you know, have coffee, their, their products or drinks and food are amazing. Uh, like the Blueberry Scotts, man, ooh, um, and, um, oh, and I love the apple cider, but they always just continue it. Anyway, I'm not even gonna, anyway. Um, I love Main Street, um, and, and I love all the stores over there. I don't, I don't think that they're having any issue. I mean, I at least know the beauty supply stores are doing great off of me. Um, a- and you know what? I think the parking lots could probably use a little bit of love. Um, other than that, like, you know, if you've been over there, the streetscape, the beauty, the beautifying, the, the sidewalks and stuff and making it more walkable, that is awesome. Um, you know, I love that, that, um, we're continuing to approve the walkability of Clarkson. Cause a lot of people here walk. I mean, I used to. I didn't even have a car for a while and, you know, uh, and I think that's great that we're, you know, making it more attractive and making people wanna move here. Because look at this beautiful little, oh, look at Refuge, look at this nice little area. So, yeah, I, I love that. The whole, the whole section of the town. Love it.
Thank you so much. Uh, so we're gonna start this question with Mark Perkins. Mark, how would you work to create more affordable housing in the city of Clarkston?
Can I have more than two minutes or?
Well, we'll try to keep it within two minutes.
That's it. You know, again, that is an incredibly, um, I think an incredibly complex question and it goes back to collaboration. Um, uh, I think you have to look at the availability of land. It ties in with the, you know, zoning conversation that we've been having, you know, in terms of, uh, uh, what kind of housing, you know, are, are people open to, uh, and are we able to, you know, to, to put on the lots that we have? Um, uh, I think it, it comes down to price point. You know, we, uh, we actually fall into, I think, what some people would consider, you know, the, uh, affordable housing solution, which is, uh, we had to get a hardest hip fund grant for, uh, for our home, you know, to, and, uh, that was back when, when things weren't going for over $200,000. Um, so I don't know if I can answer that, you know, in, in, you know, two minutes. I think it involves, uh, collaboration with, uh, just about every aspect of the community, um, you know, and, uh, um, uh, you, you know, a conversation that involves, uh, you know, landlords, it involves, uh, you know, homeowners, it involves, uh, experts in zoning. I think we've commissioned a hundred thousand dollar, you know, study recently to look at, uh, zoning reform and everything else. Um, and, uh, and I, I think, again, it brings the annexation conversation back on the table. It's like, is that a part of this? If we're, we're not able to build in our existing city limits, are we open to expanding? So.
Great. Thank you. Tiny McAllister, the question is to you. How would you work to create more affordable housing in the city of Clarkston? If you are elected to city council?
Excellent question. Uh, so first of all, we need to address what is affordable, right? Because some people wanna say, oh, 15 or 1,500, 1,500 is, is affordable. No, it's not. Under a thousand dollars is affordable. And if we're not talking less than a thousand dollars, it's not affordable. So, um, I mean, you know, of course there are different types of homes, you know, single family, duplexes, apartments. And, and we've got a mix of all that here in Clarkston. Um, honestly, I feel like the apartments are in really bad shape already. And, and we're already charging a lot for these apartments that are in really bad shape. That, that would be a, a good place to start is to say, okay, these places that aren't in good shape already, why are they so expensive? Like, can we do anything to bring the rent down any further? Like, overall, like, is that at all possible? Because if it is, I think a lot of people would wanna move here because they could afford it. Right now, you know, it, it's so expensive to live here. And, and if you're like a single mom or, you know, you know, you're taking care of an elderly parent or whatever it is and, and you can't find something that's affordable. I, if, if we're gonna say, oh, we're gonna keep building, whatever, we need to address the houses that we already have and figure out, like, how can we make the houses that we already have more affordable? Thank you for the question.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Dean Moore, question is to you. Uh, how would you work to create more affordable housing within the city of Clarkston if you are elected to Clarkston City Council?
Well, it is a very complex issue and the, I think every city is dealing with the same problem. So we're looking at uh, other cities, Atlanta, uh, New Orleans was one that we have gotten some, uh, uh, some help in trying to understand the problem. We set up a, uh, a, uh, affordable housing uh, trust fund a few years ago. And I mentioned it earlier, we were able to tap into that for this COVID relief on, on rent and mortgage. Um, and that was set up to help with the down payment, uh, to get people into homes. That's, that's kind of a big obstacle for people to get by. But I think the biggest problem is the minimum wage. Uh, wages haven't kept up with the, uh, cost of living. And so that's, that's really where it, it needs to start. And, you know, being a part of a progressive, uh, council, uh, in our most progressive period, we actually passed a, a, a resolution. we actually passed a, a resolution to, uh, increase our minimum wage for city employees to $15 an hour. Um, you know, if we can, if we can get wages up and, and also continuing education with people developing more skills to be able to get higher income. Uh, there's prospective, uh, developers all around Clarkston trying to set up, uh, some, some pretty dense neighborhoods. And they're projecting that the people that are going to be living there in rental units to be making $75,000 a year. That's, that's a pretty high bar. Um, and so we, we've got to do human development. Uh, we've got to do, uh, uh, income equity and, uh, and, and see what we can do, you know, by following the other cities, see what other programs they may have to help get people into homes, uh, that, that they can afford.
Thank you, Dean. All right, so we are, uh, rounding this debate out. We are at our last question and then we're going to give each candidate about two minutes to make a closing statement. Uh, all the candidates, you've been great. Thank you all for participating, having full participation in a, in a forum like this is awesome. Giving voters information so they can make good decisions is awesome. So I want to thank all of you for being here and participating. And, uh, to start with our last question, we're going to start with Tiny McAllister. Tiny McAllister, the city is going to be updating its comprehensive plan and zoning code. What changes would you like to see?
Oh, gosh. Um, planning and zoning code, gosh, we were just looking over there. Oh, that's such a controversial question. Okay, um, oh my goodness. I, I don't think I have an answer for that, I'm sorry.
It's okay, that's not a problem. I tell you what, how about we move along to the other candidates? And if you, if you want to add something to it, we'll let you jump back in, okay?
Oh, I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. Uh, so Mark Perkins, uh, the city is going to be updating its comprehensive plan and zoning code. What changes would you like to see?
Um, well, I'm under the understanding, I, I think we've commissioned again, uh, a consultant to come up with a study on some of that stuff with proposed recommendations. Um, and I think we've paid close to a hundred thousand dollars for it. Um, I'm, I'm hoping they are worth their money. I'm assuming they'll be worth their money. Um, so I would probably go with those recommendations. Um, the reason for that is, uh, again, this is one of those problems that, you know, and then challenges that requires a lot of different voices and, and, you know, a lot of different disciplines in terms of making a, uh, good decision for the future of the community. Um, you know, you've got to consider economic growth. You have to consider, uh, you know, changing demographics, um, you know, uh, changing house prices, um, everything else. And so, uh, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm not an expert on that. You know, that's something that, uh, we have experts that we brought in to advise us on. Um, and so I would have leaned, would lean towards that. And again, towards having inclusive conversations with the people who make up the community. Um, all, all of the people who make up the community, um, to, to help, uh, inform those decisions as well.
Thank you, Mark. Dean Moore, question to you. Uh, the city is going to be updating its comprehensive plan and zoning code. What changes would you like to see?
Well, I agree with Mark that we are having a, um, a hundred thousand dollar contract with some experts, but the experts need our feedback. And the thing that I would like to see is a strengthening of the neighborhoods. Um, is, is a big thing. I'm also on the Historic Preservation Commission right now. And, um, we, we need to really define and make sure that our neighborhoods, the, uh, single family homes are protected. And the, um, uh, the, um, the overall, um, uh, development that's planned for Clarkston in, in the smaller areas that we have for development need to be smart, uh, uh, projects. And so smart development is, is critical. And the, uh, uh, you know, I, I, I can't wait to get in there to, to, uh, make sure that we, um, we, we do have these protections. It's, it's, it's a really complex thing to plan the future. And so in the past with the, uh, uh, different zoning changes, uh, there's, there's been some, some things that fell through the crack that were, um, potentially inappropriately, uh, zoned. So protecting the, the zoning we have and figuring out a way to do smart development, uh, is, is really critical. And so the, the changes that I want to make are basically strengthening what we have and making sure that we are open to, uh, new development in a smart way.
Thank you, Dean. Tiny McAllister, did you have anything else you wanted to add? Did you?
Yeah, um.
I'll give you, I'll give you a minute thirty.
I appreciate you letting me continue. Yeah, I kind of froze up there. Um, so I kind of, you know, want to take this issue as it comes. And then, you know, let the experts make their decisions and then work with the council and work with the city manager to, you know, make these kinds of decisions. I, I'm not, you know, necessarily against single family homes. I'm not against, um, you know, multifamily or apartments. Um, I think this is a case by case, you know, basis where, you know, we say, okay, we've got to look at, um, you know, the different zoning issues. And, um, are, are we clear cutting trees? Are we, um, are we, you know, looking at erosion? And what effect this is going to have on, you know, the local environment? That's all stuff that has to be taken on a case by case basis. So, um, you know, I'm not necessarily an expert on this, obviously. Um, but, you know, I'll, I'll definitely take it as it comes. Thank you.
Well, Tiny McAllister, I don't think anybody on this Zoom call is an expert on it. So I think you're, you are in good company. Um, I'm certainly not. Um, so we are at the end of our debate. I want to thank everybody for watching. I want to thank our candidates, uh, for, for one, for pursuing a career in public service. It, it's a very undervalued part of our civic life and, uh, we're very grateful that you've chosen to put yourself out there and put yourself up to the scrutiny in order to serve in public office. Uh, we are going to get, uh, to our, give each candidate about two minutes, uh, to answer, uh, to provide a final statement, if you will. Uh, and I wanted to start with, uh, Mark Perkins. Mark, uh, two minutes to make your closing statement, sir.
Thanks, Dan. Yeah, so, you know, again, we've talked about a lot of the different issues that are facing Clarkston. Um, you know, and a lot of our time has been spent on zoning. Um, and I think the, the thing that I, I want to remind voters of is that zoning is but one piece of, of city government. You know, it's, it's an important one. And, um, a lot of the initiatives that are the cause for this being such a, a point of conversation and one in particular that's been alluded to, um, actually isn't going to be an issue, um, you, you know, anymore. Those, those plans have changed. Um, that knowledge, you know, and, and, and the ability, you know, for us to move forward as a community is going to come from conversations. It's going to come from being able to, uh, work with one another. Um, uh, from being able to, uh, to talk directly to one another instead of about one another. And moving our city council forward and our community forward, um, in a way that, uh, we make this community work for everyone. Not just homeowners, not just renters, not just refugees, uh, not just our, our neighborhoods, you know, in whatever shape or form they are. And that's the kind of leadership that I hope to bring to the council. I think it's the kind of leadership that we need and that's what I look for in leaders. And, uh, so that's what I, I hope to, to bring to the council. If, um, you know, for those of you listening, uh, those of you who might be watching in a recording, um, you know, feel free to reach out to me if you have, you know, continued concerns. I'm always available, you know, for a, a phone call unless my, my toddlers tell me otherwise. Um, you can go to voteforperkins.com, um, and there's contact information on the website. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so, so much. Dean Moore, closing statement, sir.
Yes, um, one thing I'd like to mention is that, uh, I, I appreciate, uh, Mark and, and Tiny coming out to, this is a voluntary, uh, position, uh, sometimes thankless. So, uh, I, I look forward to them, uh, being involved in the community and continuing their involvement in the community. But there was a, a low income apartment complex. It's under construction right now. And one of the selling points that they, that, that I thought was really special to me was that they were going to have a meeting room where they could have programs for people. And the big thing that they were pushing was financial literacy. And I think that, that everybody can use financial literacy. And so that was a selling point to me. And so that's, that's sort of a smart development to me is where they're actually talking about that collaboration with the actual tenants. Uh, I, I do want to see more, uh, property maintenance enforcement. Uh, you know, some of the apartments, as Tiny can probably tell you, they, they made, I, I'm not sure what her situation is at, uh, in her location, her apartments. But they need to be on top of, of the, uh, the maintenance for these people that are living here. Uh, we, we did a few years ago, put in place, uh, a, a program for that and it just needs to be enforced. Just want to move forward with that. And I do want to continue the relationship with the, uh, different refugee agencies. Uh, they've been great for the community. I volunteered with all of them at some point or another in different aspects. And, uh, so I, 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 I'd really like to continue that relationship and build on it. And, uh, you can go to my website, moreforclarkston.org. I've got contact information there and, um, uh, I, I look forward to, uh, to a good election coming up in, uh, March, uh, March sixteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Tiny McAllister, you will have the last word. Your closing statement, please.
Yay, awesome. Thank you for having us and, um, thank you guys for, uh, this wonderful conversation. I really enjoyed this whole hour. Um, so what should I say? Um, I, I am so amazed that I have this opportunity. Um, you know, I, I, I'm just, um, I'm amazed. I'm so amazed that I could be sitting here and, and having these conversations and, and, and being able to, to connect to people and connect to my community. And, and I hope, I pray and I hope that, you know, they'll do their research. They'll read about being Mark and Dean and, and they'll make their, um, you know, opinions and see what we have to say. And, you know, and I hope that they'll see that, you know, I'm here to represent everyone. Ev- like, it doesn't matter if you're poor or if you're well off. You know, I, I'm going to be looking out for everybody and I'm here to represent everybody. That's what I'm doing this for. I'm the public servant. I am here to represent you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiny. We, uh, so this is the Decatur.com Twitch show. Uh, we tape every Wednesday at six o'clock. The Clarkston elections, early voting is going to start on February twenty second. Uh, if you are going to vote on Election Day, that's March sixteenth. If you need to look up your polling place, go to the Georgia Secretary of State My Voter page. Google that, uh, you'll be able to look up your sample ballot, your polling location, things like that. Uh, DeKalb Votes, I believe, is the, uh, is the website for all DeKalb County election information. So please, if you live in Clarkston, if you can vote in this election, go vote. These local elections are way more important than any of the elections you'll deal with at the state or federal level. These people have way more ability to influence what goes on in your day to day life than the president or senators or anybody else. So please make a plan, go vote. Uh, and please join us again next Wednesday at six o'clock. I do not know who the guests will be. Of course, I never do. I promise you, it'll be fun and we'll have a good time and, uh, it'll be worth your time to join us. So see you next Wednesday, everybody. Bye bye.